Good morning. I would like to call the LRA meeting to order. I am Calvin Arnold, the LRA chairman. On behalf of myself, fellow commissioners, the mayor of the city of St. Louis, the comptroller's office, and the board of education, along with Neil, I mean, I'm sorry, Shelton Anderson, and the employees of the LRA, we welcome you. It is the job of the LRA to sell unutilized, underdeveloped properties to residents and developers that have the financial ability and expertise to redevelop such properties and get them back on the tax roll. In a few moments, we will start our procedures listed on the agenda for today. If you have any, if I have anyone that has been assigned to speak on behalf of their offer, you were given that chance. But please limit your presentations to three minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Okay.
We're going to wait for that.
No, we can go ahead and do that. We have our minutes as presented in our packets. And I would ask that we move to approve those minutes for the July 30th, 2025 meeting as presented.
Second.
So before, sorry, everyone, before we move to the minutes, we'll need a roll call to establish a forum.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
May I have a roll call?
Commissioner Arnold.
Present.
Commissioner Brown.
Okay. Okay. Present.
Commissioner Hikes.
Present.
Okay. Correction on the minutes. I understand that we have some adjustments and we need to postpone those minutes. So I would like to withdraw my motion to approve the minutes and make a motion that we postpone those minutes to our next meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Can we call for the vote, please?
Commissioner Arnold.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Hikes.
Yes.
It's been moved in second and approved with no dissension, motion carries. Okay. Next.
Have a, go ahead. Did you have a first? Your dinner?
And so, yeah, we have reports of commissioners first. There are no reports.
I'm sorry. You have any reports from the commissioners?
No report.
None.
No report. Okay.
Ready for speaker?
Yes, please.
First, item number 53, seven, eight, nine, and 95. That will be Taylor Jones, Gordon Clark.
Fifty-three.
Can you repeat those, Ms. Dean?
The numbers were number seven, eight, nine, number fifty-three, and I think he said ninety-five.
Can I defer to Monique Thomas from Cornerstone for item fifty-three first?
Sure.
Hello, thank you. My name is Monique Thomas. I'm representing Corn, excuse me, Cornerstone Corporation as the executive director. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you. Cornerstone acts as the administrative partner for the resident-led We Collab Neighborhood Plan, which the city formally adopted in 2023. We're looking, we're seeking to acquire 5738, 5742, and 5752 Maple Avenue, which are central to the plan's five designated, to one of the five designated focus areas, Maple and Goodfellow Corridor. The plan is not an outside imposition. It was created by the residents and with the residents of the West End Invisitation Park, who asked for this specific intersection to be transformed into a safe, welcoming, vibrant hub. We've had multiple community pop-ups and design sessions with residents as recently as August, where they have confirmed the desire for this to become a public plaza and gathering space for connection. I will not go into why they strategically matter to give more space. But Cornerstone has decades of experience as a housing ministry in the operation focus area of the city of St. Louis. And we have already secured design support and community engagement, including a series of conceptual designs with Mackey Mitchell pro bono architects and several, in a pop-up, excuse me, community pop-up events. We are committed to continuing to raise funds, but have also been awarded by CDA to, for our construction dollars as well. And so, closing, we respectfully request LRA approval of the purchase for 57, 5738, 5742, and 5752 Maple Avenue. These parcels are not speculative investments. They are resident-driven priorities, and we have secured the approval of the We Collab Implementation Committee, who we work with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gordon Carlson, and we have a number of neighborhood residents here as well who have also signed in. I don't know if, whether you want all of them to speak this morning or not.
Just one representative?
Yes.
And if you could start with the parcel that you're speaking?
Okay. Parcel seven, eight, and nine have not come before the Development Review Committee. So we ask that you defer them until they bring their plans to the Neighborhood Committee. And also, number ninety-five, which was deferred from last month's meeting. It's the last, one of the last items on your list. They, as well, have not come before the Development Review Committee for the neighborhood. So we would appreciate being able to review their plans before they acquire the property.
Okay, and they have been invited?
We, we were just learning yesterday that they are pursuing the property. They have not made any contact with our Development Review Committee, which is supposed to be part of LRA's telling them when they apply to purchase the property to contact us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is that the same?
Does he have time that I'd like to make a comment?
Go ahead.
Good morning. Lisa Potts, 10th Ward resident and resident of the West End. While we just had a few moments left, I just wanted to acknowledge while you only allowed a couple of people to speak, that we have seven neighborhood residents here in the room and several online. This is very important to us. And again, you know, we started this plan in 2018, and we're still going strong, and we just respectfully request.
Get this one to stand up.
Yeah, if you all would please stand, and somebody else is walking in the room. We have several people online. And again, you know, our older woman, Shemene Clark Hubbard, helped us put this process in place back in 2018, that when people come in our neighborhood to do development, that they come before our, you know, Community Committee to get approval and alignment with the plan that you all, as a city, adopted. And so, that's all we're asking for. Thank you. Do you want to say? Yep, okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
The next speaker we have signed up is for item number fifty-seven. That's Anwon Roberts.
And this is item seven. The fifty-seven, sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How y'all doing today?
Great.
Um. The neighboring property at 2859 Belt has been in my family for nearly thirty-five years. And as my grandfather believed in St. Louis City, so do I. To become a part of the family legacy, my plan is to purchase the empty lot at 5477 St. Louis Avenue and use the parcel for additional parking. All right. Yes, sir. Uh, no, no ma'am, that's it.
Thank you.
All right.
We're ready for the next person, please.
Excuse me, the next speaker is for item number eighteen. Poston Swat, West Old North Days of this. Item number eighteen.
Good morning. My comments will be similar to the first comments this morning. As the vice president and real estate chair of the O'North St. Louis Restoration Group, I would like to request time for the community to have awareness, not necessarily approval, of the proposed development plans for these twenty-four lots listed here in eighteen. As part of the project, connect six neighborhoods around the NGA, we have worked with the CDA and LRA for more than four years to discuss community goals. One of our current initiatives is for the neighborhood organization is searching for developers to build one hundred, $100,000 two-bedroom, senior-friendly, energy-efficient homes for regular people and seniors to buy in the neighborhood that's worth owning. Multiple low-cost LRA lots will bring down the cost of these homes. We would like to request, once again, time for the community to have awareness, not necessarily approval, but awareness of the proposed development plans for these twenty-four lots. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes.
Uh, have a hand.
Okay. You have to wait to, are you, did you sign? Okay. No, you, you had to have signed up. I'm sorry. Okay.
The next speaker is item number ninety-one, Taylor Jones.
Hello. I'm Taylor Jones. This is my associate, Carol Smith. I'm here for three items. So basically, I want to start off with on fifty thirty-four Maple, LRA adjacent to my property fence fell.
What item is this?
That's not ninety-one.
It's not ninety-one. It was fifty-one. No. Fifty-one.
Ninety-one. Here for items ninety-one, forty-two, twenty-nine, and forty-two, thirty-three, each page.
Yes. Oh. So.
I am. I am.
Okay.
But I'm, you want me to go there or?
No, no. Yeah, yes, we spoke. We thought that you were speaking on ninety-one. You're speaking on another parcel. Could you start off with ninety-one? That's what we have.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
So I'm here. I've been corresponding with Mr. Anderson. I would like to purchase two lots adjacent to my property. My property, Jason, this is my property.
We see it.
Okay. Adjacent to my property. I would like to try to purchase those two lots. Also, for future development. Also, during the storm, a tree off an LRA lot fell on my fence and destroyed it. So that's why I was starting off.
Okay.
So I have two pieces of property that LRA fell on my, tree fell on my property and destroyed both of my fence.
This is the main.
Now, like I was saying, like I was saying, this is Paige. This is more pictures of Paige, of the tree. I have paid, removed the tree, and trying to find out what I could do. I also talked to Sean Thomas. He said, get in touch with the people with LRA. They would take care of me. But like I said, now, this is, this is the property on Maple adjacent to my property. Now, I've been having problems getting the city to come out to cut it. But then, when they cut it, they won't pick up any trash, which breeds roaches and rot, or rodents and rat, roaches and rodents.
That's the property on Maple.
This is on Maple. And this is where I caught Sean. That's the back where the fence fell. And then, it's overgrown.
Okay, well, we'll make note of that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
So can we make, oh, you gonna get back with me about the prop, lots?
Yes, right now, we're hearing from you in support of your offer. And then, after we hear from everyone, we'll go into making a decision on the offer that you've presented. Offer number ninety-one.
Okay.
Okay.
Aye.
Thank you. Yes. We're ready for the next one. Thank you.
The next speaker is for item number sixty-nine B. That's Kathy Wong.
Good morning. Yes, I'm here. Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, I'm here in regards to that property on Laurel Avenue at fourteen sixty-one Laurel.
Sixty-nine B.
Sixty-nine. Well, I grew up in that neighborhood, and I did go out and I did do a walkthrough with Sean Thomas in regards to, this is my first time being here. So thank you for even having this LRA program. I wish I knew about it sooner. But I'm here to say that I want to come back to my neighborhood and start revitalizing and improve the neighborhood. And I did go through there, and I saw that there's a lot of houses that could be redone, you know, across the street. I talked to some neighbors there. One lady who lived there for many, many years. So she was truly excited to see me there, myself and Sean and one of the inspectors. She was talking about how that it was, it was her, and she knew the neighbors that lived there for many, many years. The house has been vacant for a long time. It's listed as a two-family flat. And I am wanting to actually turn it into a once, you know, two-story home. I do want to know, I do want to say that I understand that LRA did a significant amount of work there, and I am prepared to finish that off within fourteen months or less. Okay, so I am really hoping that I can bid on a property that if, if I don't do it this time, I will be back next time. So, but thank you for listening. And hey, this is a great job. This is a great program. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Number, item number twenty-four, Timmerman.
Thank you. Hello, my name's Mark Timmerman, and my firm, Timmerman Law LLC, has made an offer on four parcels, forty-one fifty-one North Newstead, forty-one fifty-three North Newstead, forty-four thirteen Lee Avenue, and forty-four fifteen Lee Avenue. When the tornado hit, I live in the county, but when the tornado hit, I contacted my friend Calvin Motley, who lives on Lee in Penrose. And he was, he's an expert handyman. He already was volunteering to fix his neighbors' homes and do emergency repairs. So he thought of this idea, STO rebuild, establishing an organization that would raise money from the public to keep funding his work. And my firm basically has been sponsoring and volunteering time to set anything up. In the past months, we've raised almost $50,000 for Penrose. We created a TikTok account, over 5,000 followers, over 100,000 views. So there's a lot of people that love Calvin, Penrose, the neighborhood. Calvin's trying to start a big community garden for free food and veggies kind of across the street from him. It would be right outside the back of the corner that I'm looking at. And I really have, this has become a calling for me, and I feel out of place and everything, and everything's new. But it's been a joy of my life to help Calvin and, and learn about Penrose and the people there. And we've hosted events, cleanup events. We're gonna host more. I'll be doing stuff in Penrose for a long time, I think. And so, the idea that I have is to move my law firm there. We just have two employees. I started maybe two and a half years ago. We're gonna hire more attorneys. And we do civil rights, section nineteen eighty-three civil rights lawsuits. We do criminal defense and other, you know, community efforts, obviously. And so, and I have some history, actually, with Monique on the Ferguson Commission a long time ago as an intern. And so, I feel like this is kind of a full circle, like going into an area, moving my business there that I've just always loved and been passionate about. And I, the last thing I'll say is that not just my law firm, but in the next couple of years, we want to build out that corner to be a business incubator, barber shops slash therapy office, coffee shop, fruit and veggie, you know, selling business, emergency childcare, like a, a hub that, that can be, and all run by community residents, like people who need businesses, who want businesses, who want to develop that. We would help, you know, provide all, any resources for those people to, you know, start doing that. And I think the last thing is, if this offer is accepted, we will immediately, I mean, I'm there almost every week with Calvin, and I'll just focus my attention on cleaning up that corner, making it absolutely beautiful, flowers, you know, before we build. And flowers, a Penrose sign. Calvin's already started work on a mini lib, you know, the street mini free libraries for kids. And so, he's already started on that, a beautiful brick that we'll put on that corner. And people have already donated books and sent them to my firm and donated money for that. So it's, we're really passionate about it. Thank you so much for allowing me to offer this. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
So you, yeah, you were saying, you were saying that you met with a lot of people in the community. What kind of outreach have you had in terms of the neighborhood organization in presenting this plan with all the things that you're saying that you want to do?
Yeah. That's a good question. I think Timmerman Law LLC has not really been present, you know, as an org, as a business. But I feel like I've only been present with STO rebuild, you know, but I've been able to meet some residents. His block actually doesn't have a lot, you know, it's a lot of vacant. Properties are LRA-owned. So there's not tons of residents who live there, but I've gotten to know a few. We've hosted block parties, cleanup effort recently. We're gonna do more. Where I passed out flyers to all the homes in the, in the block, and we had some residents come and get free food. And I mean, I wouldn't expect any residents to do like clean, I mean, cleanup effort, right? They, people should be doing that, you know, the city. And so, I'm glad the public is raising money. But yeah, so I haven't met as many community members. I'm excited to, the North Newstead Association, I mean, over 150 volunteers have reached out on TikTok. And we've got, I mean, architects, professionals, residents, business people, yeah, just so many people, and which will take years to kind of utilize all their volunteering. And so, North Newstead Association messaged one time and said, we fully support Calvin. And, you know, Calvin, STO rebuild is technically an org there now. So I don't, I have not met or established tons of relationships, but I love that area and hope to continue for years establishing friendships there and just providing legal services in a law firm desert.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your presentation.
Danielle Langerson, item number twenty-four.
I didn't know I was gonna have to talk. How you guys doing today? That sister was right. This is a great program. I made an offer on the lot. Twenty, twenty-four, right?
Twenty-four. I thought it's.
It's twenty-four. I purchased the building next to the lot there from the LRA already. And I just want to, I'm in the process of building a four-apartment complex at the unit. I've already sold the one at twenty-one forty-seven. The one, twenty-one forty-one is occupied. Those are also LRA properties, if I'm not mistaken. But yes, at twenty-one oh-three, I'm putting a four-apartment complex there. And then, right next to it is the lot I like to use for parking space for the tenants in the building that I purchased from you earlier this year.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you for your presentation.
Bob Young, for item number fourteen. He's only here if you have any questions.
Okay. No question.
He's saying no questions, Dean.
No questions. Okay, thank you. Questions? And so, we have George Memes for items. Mr. Memes?
Yeah, it's already been spoken for.
Okay, good. Thank you. And then, we have number fifty-one, Elliot Schmidt.
Howdy. I'm Elliot Schmidt. I'm hoping to buy the lots at seventeen hundred and seventeen oh-eight Cora Avenue. I, I live right across the street from them. That's my house. It, I was part of the storm damage in, back in May. And with that in mind, I've been looking at those two empty lots across the street from me for the last seven years. I've owned the house, I own it for two. I've lived there for seven. But I know that those lots have been empty for like twenty years now. And what I would like to do with them is turn them into an orchard and garden. And what I would like to do with them is turn them into an orchard and garden. It's just add trees to the neighborhood, add life to the neighborhood, add color to the neighborhood in a way that's just not there right now, especially because of everything that has been knocked down by the tornado. So, and if I can get an orchard going, it'd be, it'd be fun to be able to reach out to local schools and be like, hey, you know, if you guys wanna see an actual orchard, an apple orchard here, then you know, you might not have to travel, you know, a ways away that you might not have time for. And so, and plus, again, I live right across the street from it. So I have a vested interest in making sure that it looks a lot better than just overgrown.
Thank you.
Darnell Martin for item number forty-one.
Good morning. I'm not sure how I got up here, cuz I, I mean, I didn't volunteer, but I guess I'll go ahead and talk anyway. I have the, the, this lot, y'all see the lots there? That's a great big piece of property and I've always wanted to build a garden. And I want to make this into an organic community garden where I can distribute the food to people, maybe teach them how to grow stuff. There's really some interesting developments in organic gardening and I'd like to experiment with that with your help. Thank you very much. Y'all have any questions for me?
One must hit the name.
Good job, the spot, huh?
Herman Bailey for item number eighty-five.
Thank you for this opportunity. The property that is in question has been in my family about forty years. And I really didn't intend to keep this property, but whatever happened to it, I wanted to have some kind of access to it and put into what happened. Because I remember that, and I had people come to me and wanted to do things there. And the only thing that I wanted to do was to pay the taxes on the property and allow, choose the people that I wanted to deliver that to. I had people come to me saying that they wanted to do it. At my age, I said, I don't want to rebuild myself personally, but I want to have an input into that area. Because I had a lot of experience there in dealing with the peoples in the area. Even though I live in West, Southwest County, I, my family have had that property over forty years. And so I wanted to just have an input there and decide. The person that had been coming to me and I told them they had to wait till I deal with LRA about it and then we'll decide. So that is the only thing I have. I wanna have my input into that property. Because before last year, when, when this disaster happened to the property, I could have continually working with it, but I don't wanna work with it at my age now and rebuilding and doing that. But I want to deal with the person that talked to me about it and they want to do some business there. So that is all I ask of you guys, that I have an input in what's going. And the ones that have came to me and choose it, I don't know whether they came to you guys, but if they said, I told them they were gonna have a meeting here and if they, they would contact me after I deal with this meeting and let them know. Only thing I wanted to do was to pay the taxes on it so I can choose who, who gonna deal there.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Benny Cole for item number one. Do you have anybody else? Who did you send? Benny Cole.
Betty online.
Number one.
Are you speaking in English?
Don't I need to speak?
Well, basically, my name Benny Cole, I'm looking to purchase this property here. I actually had a building that I was renting up the street, Culture Prints. I do custom design and embroidery. And now because I don't have that location, I'm working back at home. And so since I've been in that location, I've noticed that there wasn't a lot of opportunities for business to grow because there's old buildings that need to be redone. And so I decided just to go ahead and purchase a lot down the street. So then my people still know where I am and they can come get their products from you there.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation.
Alder Woman Hughes for item number nineteen. John Brown for another.
Can you repeat that one, I'm sorry?
Number nineteen, Laura Hughes.
Hello, LRA Committee, good morning. My name is Laura Hughes. I am petitioning to purchase the thirty-five vacant lots on St. Louis Avenue in Maffet. My primary reason for purchasing the vacant lots is my current development footprint. The chapter ninety-nine covers this particular area. And so this will allow me to continue the work that we're currently doing on Maffet and the Simmons School. And so it's a part of the redevelopment agreement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Darnell for item number twenty-five.
Good morning. My name's John Brown. I'm here representing Twin Pillars. We're attempting to acquire the property at twenty-eight thirty-five Missouri. It's a building that has been burned out. You can't see it, the majority of it's behind that tree. But the building's been burnt out for about ten years is what the local neighbors are telling us to that property. We purchased the property next door and have been renovating that. So we're hoping to, so this is actually a property that we own on Page Bowl or the forty-six twenty-six. It's not related to twenty-eight thirty-five, but twenty-eight thirty-three is adjacent to twenty-eight thirty-five. So we're hoping to demolish the building and then add that to the twenty-eight thirty-three property as a side lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Monique Thomas for number fifty-three. Lisa for number fifty-three, Monique Thomas.
We've, we've already spoken in address.
Yeah, yeah.
Yadi Development.
Number?
Number twelve and sixty-three.
What about sixty-three?
Number twelve, Yadi Develop.
Hello, my name's Terrence Williams. I'm with a company called Yadi Development. We specialize in historic preservations. We are taking a high interest in the Hyde Park neighborhood. And this is a property that's like eyesore and it really caught our attention. It can make a magnificent comeback due to the potential historic restoration that we plan to perform, such as putting all the original pieces back together, such as the slate roof, the wood windows, doors, bringing all the original character back to the building. And we really take a high interest and we done multiple projects like this over and over again. So it is one of many that we have done and we would love to get this under our belt to take it to the next level.
Thank you.
Barbara Manzera, item number eighteen, number eighteen.
Hi, my name's Barbara Manzera. I'm a member of the Old North St. Louis Restoration Group and a member of the Neighborhood Planning Group for the Project Connect Team for Old North. We would like to respectfully ask if you could defer decision on the LMAC development until the neighborhood organization and the Project Connect Team have had a time to take a look at it. I lived in Old North for twenty years. During that time, I've bought two lots from LRA. Both times I had to get a letter from Old North St. Louis, whether pro or con, before I could even be scheduled. My offer could even be scheduled to become before this board. That was a hard stop that I had to go through. I would like to ask this board to apply the same process to all offers. If neighborhood letter pro or con is not required, it should be required from no one. If neighborhood letter is required, it should be required from everyone. Alternately, if there is a reason, compelling reason for this two-tier process that you do in fact have at this time, where some people need a letter and some people don't, I would ask that you publish the rules for that. What are the standards by which you decide someone will get that expedited treatment? I am not here to say that that's necessarily wrong. There are compelling reasons in real estate to move quickly. However, it would be increased trust and transparency with the community if we could see what those standards were. And then we would feel assured that somebody that was hopping the line had been through a review process where professional people had decided that there was a compelling reason. I would just ask for more transparency to increase trust in the neighborhood in the LRA process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Harris.
Deanne. Delores Johnson for item number sixty-four.
Hello, my name is Delores Johnson with the Hand of Hearts Home Care. And I was interested in a property at fifteen thirty-five Hogan. It's because I grew up in the JBL area at Jefferson and Cass. And I have been looking to move back into the area. I also would like to have residence for people with the Department of Mental Health, for older people who may have minor mental health issues. I wanna put them in the neighborhood so they don't feel like they're secluded. I wanna put them in a home to where they feel like their home and they're not anywhere uncomfortable and in an area to where their friends and family can come and visit them without them being, you know, in a residential home or somewhere where they might not be comfortable. I just wanna make sure that they're in a, a home to where they're loved and cared for. And that's what I plan on doing, buying other property in North St. Louis and try to give our people a chance.
Thank you.
Dante Davis for number forty-four. Item number forty-four.
Good morning. I'm looking about the property at fifty-nine eighty and fifty-nine eighty-four MLK. I'm looking to develop an outdoor venue, which would be a food truck park at that property. I believe it would generate income and opportunity for new businesses as well as establish food truck businesses, businesses to thrive. There isn't a restaurant or a grocery store within five mile radius of that neighborhood. It's a food desert, no grocery stores, no restaurants. And the lot would give food truck vendors a location for their customers to come instead of drive, have to just drive around, find designated locations or the customers will drive around and look for the food truck. So those said lots will be a safe haven for those food trucks to have an opportunity to do business with their customers. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Braxton McKinney, item number eighteen.
Good morning, all. My name is Braxton McKinney. I represent All Mac Holdings LLC. Number, item number eighteen on this list. And we are attempting to purchase the twenty-four lots located in the Old North St. Louis neighborhood. And we currently have a forty-nine unit low-income housing tax credit development in the neighborhood known as Webster School Senior Apartments. The twenty-four parcels that we plan on acquiring, we want to either develop duplex or quadplexes for seniors that will be ADA compliant. So we do wanna comply with the senior housing need. We also emailed the Old North St. Louis Development Commission on four different occasions back in August. Did not receive a response and we attempted to join the Zoom meeting, but the Zoom link did not take us to a actual call. It was to a trucking company. So we've attempted to reach out and comply, just haven't received a response at this time. But yeah, we plan on developing other quadplex or duplexes, so other forty-eight or ninety-six senior units. So fifty-five and up, potentially sixty-two. So that's our plan for the parcels.
Thank you.
And I have, excuse me, Darnell Dennis. I don't have a number for who are you here to speak. So that concludes my list of speakers. Has anyone been overlooked?
Three online.
Tasha McIntyre for items number ten and twenty-one.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tasha McIntyre. I'm an Executive Director of the GRE Foundation. Number ten, there is a parcel missing, fourteen hundred Granville Place. You don't have that on your list? It's not mine.
Can you repeat that address again?
Do you all have fourteen hundred Granville Place additionally on your list? That was not on the application?
At this time, we don't know.
It was. Can you double check it for me? Cuz that was the whole plan. So, back to that. With the GRE Foundation, we are newly incorporated and we are a black woman veteran-led nonprofit community development on the west side. We were founded to address the urgent need for community-driven solutions in neighborhoods where vacancies like and food insecurity and financial instability undermines the quality of life. By combining affordable housing, community gardens and comprehensive, I'm sorry, comprehensive financial empowerment programs, we help families build pathways toward long-term stability and homeownership. Okay. For fourteen, for fourteen hundred Granville, the plan was for a community garden, which creates access to fresh produce, gardening education and healthy living opportunities. This location, as Miss Shante did mention, is a food desert. Affordable housing, redeveloping four parcels and to duplexes. Now, we do have site control over thirteen ninety-three Granville and thirteen ninety-three H. Are there any questions? So fourteen hundred is also, that is a vacant lot. There are multiple vehicles, trash and everything else. It is an eyesore to the community. A community garden will be a plus. And then, were there any questions? All right. And I also have number, I believe, twenty-one. How will, how will I check on if fourteen hundred was on your roll or not?
Working on that now.
Okay, thank you.
Number twenty-one, you're saying?
Concrete Capital, forty-four thirty-nine Atholom.
Okay. All right.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Yes.
Would you like to say anything? Okay, we've been maintaining forty-four thirty-five, which is adjacent to, we have been, it's been in our family for over four generations. We have been maintaining forty-four thirty-nine for over ten years. We have since fenced in the lot. We've been mowing the lot for over ten years. Before then, there were abandoned vehicles, plenty of traffic, people were lottering on the steps. Since then, we do not have that problem. Would you like to add anything?
And just like you said, we fenced it in because they were using it as a lot to fix their cars. And we asked them to get it off, but you know, it was like, well, who are you? So once we did get them off, we fenced it in. Then therefore we can maintain it without a lot of static.
And I also did speak with Alder Woman Keys about this. And we do have community support from Gary on the corner. He's been owning the store there and been living there for quite some time. His sister did rent from us at forty-four thirty-five. She was one of our residents for a couple of years as well. So we have been and will continue to be a staple in the community.
And plus, my kids stay in there now at a fourteen thirty-nine, forty-four thirty-nine. And my grandmother had built it. So we wanna keep it and just add a little more to it by having the lot next door.
Thank you.
Ms. McIntyre?
Yes.
So the fourteen hundred Granville is on another offer on another number forty-five because these are separate.
Okay.
It's a separate cut.
Okay, so I stepped up for that one. I already spoke on it.
Yeah.
Okay, but she had overlooked me, so she had called me up at the end here. So do we speak on forty-five now? No?
Okay, thank you.
William Hughes for number twenty-three.
Good morning, how you guys doing? My name William Hughes. I'm here with HG Real Estate. I'm interested in a lot, fifty-six oh three Lotus. I own multiple buildings in that area, but I got one across the street from the lot that I'm interested in trying to get. I've had that building for like twenty years. In the twenty years I've been, I just rehab, I'm in the process of rehabbing this, it's almost done completely. But the problem is that lot is, it's, it's a problem. Like it's grass, the grass is never cut. It's like seven feet high. We got, I got pictures of rats that like, like it's cats that catch the rats. They don't kill them, they just break their neck or whatnot. I got pictures of the rats dead around there. Like I've contacted LRA, I contacted the city, I've contacted the. Like I've contacted LRA, I contacted the city, I've contacted the uh, all the men. I contacted everybody about this lot and it's like, no one cares. They come through, they dump. They um, I mean, it's, you know, the city lot, what they do with the city lots. So what I'm trying to do is just basically get it and fence it up and make it more, there, there a picture, there, that's a picture of it right there. That's a fence that you can't even tell it's a fence. You know, what I'm trying to do is just basically fence it up and cut the grass. Shit, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna be honest, that's first and foremost, but I'm gonna fence it up and I'm gonna beautify my neighborhood. Like I say, I, I got multiple buildings in a unit. That's my building there. It's, it's been rehabbed though. It, that's the whole picture. But um, yeah, that's, that's it. I'm just trying to make my neighborhood a little better. You know, that, that's an eyesore on the block. And if I'm putting that money into my, my, my unit, I can't get my return if it's. Grass six, seven feet high.
Thank you.
And that concludes who I have listed. Has anyone else been overlooked? Thank you. Ms. Andrea, you can speak now?
I would like to speak to item fifty-five-seven-two-nine and five-seven-three-one Wabata Avenue. As I said, my name is Andrea Harris and purchasing the vacant lots at five-seven-two-nine and five-seven-three-one. Wabata Avenue would allow our family to provide a neighborhood garden to help nourish the community. With healthy fruits and vegetables. This would help reduce the effects of the food desert. By providing fresh nutritious foods in the community. The purchase also provides our family with additional yard space and green space. And we are well-known for keeping our property's grass cut at all times. Please note that these are a total of two vacant lots without homes on the lots. Thank you for your time.
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please state the item number you would like to speak to.
Yes, if you can hear me, I'm speaking on beha- well, first of all, good morning to the panel and everyone that's present in this space. But I wanted to support my fellow residents from in the tenth ward. I'm a long-term resident and I am in support of item number fifty-three with Cornerstone and Recallab. And I'm also in support of Gordon, which is speaking on behalf of the DRC where the future developments, developers are supposed to come before the committee. To talk about development in our community. And that's what I have today.
Have someone on who's identified themselves as this iPhone. Can you please state your name and the item that you would like to speak to?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. I thought my name showed up. My name is Amber Simmons and I'm speaking on behalf of item number nine. For Ideal Enterprise Investments as well as item number eight for IDM Assets. My colleague um, for that one could not be present, so I let him know that I could speak on his behalf as well. And I am number nine. Okay, thank you. So um, I have been working in the west end area for about the last two and a half years. I recently just completed a renovation on Chamberlain Avenue, so I am very familiar with the area, specifically that street. And I am wanting to obtain these lots from LRA to be able to develop um, either a single-family. Well, no, actually, two single-family homes on those lots there. On Chamberlain, I have received um, a lot of great feedback for the renovation that I've completed. On Chamberlain at fifty-five ninety-one Chamberlain. And so I just want to continue that process down the block. And just continue to help revitalize that particular block I have taken an interest in. As well as fifty-seven eleven Maple. I actually um, did the development plans for the house directly next door to that lot. And so in the same instance, I would like to develop on that lot as well, fifty-seven eleven, mimicking the same layout for the property. Next door that's being renovated as well. And I did actually attend the meeting with the community organization. It was maybe about a year ago for that same lot. Um, I did receive the feedback. And um, I'm just back again presenting with that one only because there was a clerical error in uh, paperwork for that lot that I received. So they just asked me to resubmit on it. Or Maple. So that's it for that one.
Thank you. That concludes our presentations of offers. Uh, at this time, we will review each offer and make a decision on each offer. At this point, everyone has had an opportunity that signed up, uh, whether they were here or online. So at this time, we're going to run through our decisions without interruption. And if you have any questions, um, if you'll follow up with staff um, later. We would really appreciate that. We have a long agenda and we need to get through the agenda in a timely manner. Thank you. With that, we'll get started. The first item that we have is under offers to purchase. Offers to purchase are parcels owned by LRA that consist of unoccupied ground or physical structures. The offers have submitted offers to purchase with the intention of rehabbing properties as residential or commercial projects. An extension of their yard space, community gardens or green spaces to enhance and beautify the community. The first item in this category is new construction. Item number one, Benny Cole, property address forty-eight twenty page. A move that we accept the offer of thirty-eight hundred uh, with a twenty-four month option. Uh, with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Could we call for the vote?
Commissioner Arnold?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Hite?
Yes.
It's been properly moved in second and approved. And with no abstentions, motion carries. Uh, item two, we have Beverly Lampkin. Property address is twelve thirty-five Bayard. A move that we counter the offer. Um, at one thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars for a twenty-four month option. With closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote. Hearing no objections, motion carries. Item three, we have multiple properties listed in Exhibit A. The offer is Lutheran Development Group Inc., care of Thomas Florent. I move that we accept the offer of twenty-four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. With a twenty-four month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number four, Talise Williams, property address fifty fifty-four Terry Avenue. A move that we counter the offer for two thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. At a twenty-four month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item five, we have multiple properties listed in Exhibit A. Offer Lutheran Development Group Inc. I move that we counter this offer. At five thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars. Uh, as a twenty-four month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item six, LaShet Rochelle Lampkin. We have multiple properties listed at twelve oh-one Bayard. Uh, twelve oh-three Bayard Avenue and twelve oh-nine Bayard Avenue. Um, we have, um, I'd like to make a motion here that we counter the offer. At five thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-four. Uh, as a twenty-four month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Could we call for the vote, please?
Commissioner Arnold?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Abstain.
Commissioner Hite?
Aye.
It's been uh, moved in second as well as um, motion carries as the two commissioners have approved. And there's one abstention.
Get a second on that motion?
Oh, I thought we did.
Didn't get there yet.
I know, we did. I thought we got a second. We didn't. I thought we guys, I thought he seconded. Did he now? Yeah, okay. Okay, so he's second. And then we call for the vote, abstain. And motion carries as there was one abstention and two carries. Okay, uh, moving on to item seven. Uh, we have offer Jeremy Jones. Offer for fifty-five, uh, I'm sorry, fifty-five fifty-five Clemens, fifty-five. Um, sixty-one Clemens and fifty-five fifty-one Clemens. I move that we defer any action on this particular parcel pending community input. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Uh, if we could call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Hite?
Yes.
Okay, uh, it's been um, approved, uh, motion carries, no abstentions. Item number eight, we have multiple properties presented in Exhibit A. Offer is IDM Assets. Uh, I move that we defer any action on these parcels pending community input. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, um, previous roll as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item nine, we have multiple properties, fifty-seven eleven Maple, fifty-six forty-six Chamberlain. And fifty-seven fifteen Chamberlain. Uh, the offer is Ideal Enterprise Investments. Uh, I move that we defer any action on this parcel pending community input. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fifty-six, I'm sorry, not fifty-six, sorry, item ten. Okay, item ten, we have um, multiple properties listed there. We have um, by GRE Foundation, thirteen ninety-five Granville Place. Um, thirteen ninety-seven Granville Place and thirteen ninety-nine Granville Place. Uh, I move that we counter uh, this offer for two thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars. As a twenty-four month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of as-is rehab program. As-is rehab programs, these are class A residential buildings with up to six units. Uh, no more than one building with no more than two contiguous lots or one commercial building. First property uh, in this category, item number eleven, offer is Orville, Orville Smith. Property address forty-nine forty-two Beckla. A move that we accept the offer of eight hundred fifty dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twelve, Yadi Development One LLC, care of Therese Williams. Move that we accept offer of twenty-five hundred with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirteen, offer Lindo Trucking LLC. We have multiple properties, one twenty-one dock, forty-three eleven Geraldine and forty-two oh one Rear Geraldine. I move that we counter this offer for thirty thousand. Th- I'm sorry. A move that we counter this offer for thirty thousand four dollars with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget. And financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role as a vote, if we could call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Arnold.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Hite.
Yes.
All right, it's been properly moved in second and all have been in favor with no, uh, objection. So motion carries. Uh, item. Number fourteen, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Uh, offer is Bob Young, move that we accept offer of two thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval. Of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fifteen, we have nineteenth Anastasia, I'm sorry, Anastasia, sorry. Staffing LLC. Uh, we have multiple properties listed. Uh, thirty-nine fifteen West Florissant, twenty-two twenty-six East College and twenty-two twenty-four East College. A move that we counter this offer at one thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item sixteen, offer Watan Asu, I'm sorry, Alhusen. And Marva Halusen. Um, we have the property address is twenty-four thirty-six South First Street. I move that we accept an offer of thirty thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval. Of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item seventeen, uh, we have Storm Pro Solution LLC. Uh, property address is fifty thirty Page Boulevard. A move that we reject offer, uh, for lack of proof of financial resources. To support the project. May I have a second?
Second.
Um. It's been, um, motion in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Under our next category is under the heading of development. Development program, these are offers for parcels owned by L R A that consist of physical structures. For the rehab and or construction of any combination of the following. Rehab and or construction of mixed-use buildings, rehab and or construction of multiple residential buildings. And rehab of residential buildings with more than six units. The first property that we have in this category is under the heading, the offer is. L M A C Holdings LLC. Uh, we have multiple properties listed, uh, in exhibit A. We move that we defer any action on these parcels pending community input and review. Prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item nineteen, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer is Fleur de Lee Development Corporation, a move that we accept offer. Of thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, as a twenty-four month option with closing, uh, contingent upon approval. Of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer is Timber, Timmerman Law LLC. I move that we defer any action on these parcels pending community input. Prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of general lot purchase program. The general lot purchase program provides guidelines for the sale of L R A vacant lots. For any purpose other than new construction, building rehab or development. The first item that we have under this category, uh, the offer is Concrete Capital LLC. Uh, item, we move to, uh, counter, uh, this offer for. One thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars with closing contingent upon approval of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty-two, offer is Glenn Wilson, property address fifty-two forty-five. Page Boulevard, a move that we accept offer of three thousand twenty-four dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item twenty-three, offer William Hughes, property address fifty-six oh three Lotus Avenue. A move that we counter offer at seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars with closing contingent upon approval. Of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty-four, offer John Langarston. Property address twenty-one oh five East College. A move that we accept offer of a thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty-five, offer Twin Pillars LLC, property address twenty-eight thirty-five Missouri Avenue. Move that we counter offer at five hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget financing. And a signed demolition contract. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty-six, offer Leon Johnson, property address nineteen fifteen Marcus Avenue. A move that we counter offer at one thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty-seven, property address is fifty-six fifty Wabida. Offer Dwayne Lenoir. Uh, uh. No, okay, okay, Lenoir, okay. Uh, I like to make a motion that we counter the offer at eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty-eight, we have multiple properties. Um, thirty-seven sixty-six Rear Lee Avenue, thirty-seven sixty-eight Rear Lee Avenue. And thirty-seven seventy-two Lee Avenue. A move that we counter the offer at two thousand thirty-two dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item twenty-nine, Willard Denlow. Property address, multiple properties at one at seventeen oh one Core Avenue. And seventeen oh nine Core Avenue. A move that we accept offer of eight thousand dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirty. We have offer from Rhonda Cosby. Property address fifty-seven hundred Martin Luther King. A move that we accept offer of four thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirty-one, offer Donald DeVivo. Property address fifty-nine sixty-eight Theodosia. A move that we accept offer of a thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Second.
I'm sorry, did I not do a second?
No.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, um, we made motion, it's been second. Uh, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. All right, uh, item number thirty-two. Offer is Michelle Wallace, property address fifty, forty-six sixty-two Saint Ferdinand. And forty-six fifty-four Saint Met, Saint Ferdinand. A move that we reject offer due to insufficient information, um, to support financial capacity. To support project. Um, could I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirty-three. Uh, multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer is Brittany Stokes, move that we accept offer of twenty-seven hundred. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item, uh, item thirty-four. Uh, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A, offer is Sylvester Denton. Uh, move that we counter this offer at one thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number thirty-five, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer is Frank Harmon, a move that we accept offer of four thousand seven hundred dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirty-six, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer Boys and Girls Club of Greater Saint Louis. Uh, a move that we accept offer of five thousand dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirty-seven, offer Roy Everett Neal. Property address forty-four forty-seven Margarita Avenue. I move that we counter this offer at one thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item thirty-eight. Offer Marion R. Jacob, Jacob. Uh, property address is fifty-five twenty-six Ren Avenue. I move to accept offer of a thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number thirty-nine, offer Kabir Mohammed. Property address twenty-nine oh four Palm Place. A move that we reject this offer due to, uh, the planned purpose not being in the highest and best use for this parcel. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty. L M Green Properties LLC, property address twenty oh eight De Soto. I move that we counter this offer at six hundred and fourteen dollars with closing contingent upon approval of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty-one, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer is S T L Rebuild. Move that we counter this offer at ten thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role, uh, previous vote as the role. I'm sorry, pre- previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty-two, um, it, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer is Terrell J. Washington. Uh, move that we reject, uh, this offer due to. Uh, this project not being in the highest and best use, these properties not being used in the highest and best use. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number forty-three, you have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer is Selena Johnson, a move that we counter this offer. At three thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars with closing contingent upon approval of financing. And a signed demolition contract. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Forty-four. Shantae Davis. Uh, property address is fifty-nine eighty Dr. Martin Luther King. Uh, move to defer any action on this parcel pending community input. Prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I neglected to mention the second address, which is fifty-nine eighty-four. It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number forty-five, G R E Foundation, property address fourteen hundred Granville Place. I move that we counter this offer at nine hundred and thirty-five dollars with closing contingent upon approval. Of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roles, vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty-six, offer Melvin Carr. Property address eight thirty-one Canaan. Property address eight thirty-one Canaan. I move that we counter this offer at one thousand four hundred and three dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty-seven, offer Thomasina Clark. Property address forty-two fifty West Cobble Brilliant. I move that we counter this offer at nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty-eight, offer Lester Courtney. Property address forty-seven thirty Couples, a move that we counter this offer. At one thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars with closing contingent upon approval of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty-nine, offer Tony Jordan. Property address forty-four twelve Cottage, a move that we counter this offer. At one thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars with closing contingent upon approval of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number fifty, offer Lu- Lucille Harris and Andrea Harris. Uh, property addresses fifty-seven twenty-nine Wabba da Avenue. And fifty-seven thirty-one Wabba da Avenue, a move that we accept offer. Uh, uh, okay, yep. I move that we counter, actually. Yeah, I move that we um, counter the offer for one thousand three hundred and forty-six dollars. Um, may I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, could we call for the vote, please?
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
It's removed in second and all have voted in favor, motion carries. Item fifty-one. Offer is Elliot Taylor Smith. Property address seventeen hundred Cora Avenue. And seventeen oh eight Cora Avenue. I move that we counter this offer at two thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fifty-two. Property addresses fifty-three nineteen Terry Avenue and fifty-three twenty-eight Terry Avenue. A move that we reject this offer due to insufficient proof of financial capacity to support project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fifty-three, Cornerstone Corporation, property addresses fifty-seven fifty-two Maple Avenue, fifty-seven forty-two Maple Avenue, fifty-seven thirty-eight Maple Avenue. Move that we accept offer. Oh, sorry, okay, no. Alright, um, move that we accept um offer of ten thousand five hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, if we could call for the vote.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Alright, alright, motion carries, alright. Uh, item number fifty-four. We have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer is James Brook, a move that we counter offer. At three thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars with closing contingent upon approval of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, it's removed in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fifty-five. We have exhibit, multiple properties listed in exhibit A, Udel Hyde. I move that we reject the items, uh, the lots that are listed in exhibit A. Uh, due to them not being used in the highest and best use uh, for the par- parcels uh, for the project. Okay, so I ask for a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fifty-six, Marver Young. Property address forty-one thirty-eight West Penn Roads, forty-one forty West Penn Roads. A move to reject offer due to insufficient proof that uh, there's uh, financial resources to support the project. Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fifty-seven, Antoine Ross. Move that we reject offer due to the green lien uh, on the property. Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. We have one item in the side lot program, the side lot programs, these are parcels owned by LRA that consist of an occupied ground that's too small to support new construction. These non-buildable lots are parcels that are less than four thousand square feet and cannot be continuous to another LRA parcel. These lots are made available and affordable to adjacent property owners to be used as a side lot and expand personal property. Item number fifty-eight, fifty-five oh six Southwest Avenue. Valencia Marshall is the offer, a move that we accept this offer uh, as a side lot. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of option renewals. Option renewals are offers requests for additional time to complete projects due to construction delays, funding et cetera, et cetera, on options that are near expiration. Offers must display proof of consistent progress to receive renewals of options and extension of time. First property we have in this category is fifty-one forty-three Raymond Avenue. New Destiny Properties LLC. Uh, I move that we grant the option renewal. Uh, with a six thousand two hundred and fifty-dollar twelve-month option. With closing contingent upon plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item sixty, we have two properties there. Um, forty-three twenty-seven Inright, forty-three twenty-nine um, Inright Avenue. A move that we uh, accept the option at three thousand two hundred as a twelve-month option. With closing contingent upon plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role is the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item sixty-one. Um, property address is forty-three forty-three Inright. And we have multiple these listed here. I need to get clarification. Um, Erica? Could you provide some clarification for me on this particular parcel? Excuse me? Okay, alright. Alright, going back to sixty-one, um, we have the property address at forty-three forty-three Inright. And I'd like to make a motion that we accept the option renewal at three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars as a twelve-month option. With closing contingent upon plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item sixty-two, we have, offer is Injep's Property LLC. We have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. I move that we counter uh, the offer at, I'm sorry, my, my reading ahead, sorry about that. Um, I move that we accept um, this option at six thousand dollars as a twelve-month option, uh, with closing contingent upon plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second? It's removed in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Okay. Um, in our next category, uh, these are the Prop NS stabilized buildings. The Prop NS buildings, uh, this is a strategic initiative with the goal of stabilizing vacant residential buildings owned by the City of Saint Louis, um, LRA, which offers these properties for sale. The program uh, was established by a community initiated and voter approved ordinance to create a dedicated source of funding to make it possible for LRA to improve properties within the city land bank of vacant buildings. This investment is intended to increase the likelihood. These properties will be purchased by private parties who will then finish their rehab and transform current deteriorating buildings into decent housing for their communities. Okay, so the first property that we have in this category, item number sixty-three. The property address is sixty-five oh three Dodier. I'm sorry, thirty-five oh seven, I'm really reading that, okay. Thirty-five oh seven Dordier Street. And the offer is Yadi Development One LLC. Uh, I move that we accept um, this bid. Uh, at four thousand eight hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next offer we have is item number sixty-four. And the property address is fifty-three, I'm sorry, fifteen thirty-five Hogan. And we have A, B, C, D, E, F and F, um, that have presented offers. So we have multiple offers on this property. A being Investor Union LLC, B, uh, Talise Williams, C, A Hand of Hearts Home Care LLC, D, Kelly M. Hall. Uh, E, Justin Samarhar, Kim Kaminyar, what, sorry, if I butchered your name, I did, sorry about that. And Tora Miller. Um, looking at all the offers here. Um, a move that we um, accept. Um, item B, offer B, uh, for five thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. And reject uh, the other offers in favor of offer B. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item sixty-five. Property address forty-nine seventeen Maple Avenue. A move that, uh, the offer is Cheryl Walker. Uh, of Property Shoppers LLC, a move that we accept offer of five thousand six hundred dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item sixty-six, property address forty-two sixty-seven Farland Avenue. Offer Danielle Hall and Tavon Walker Gun Drop. Uh, move that we accept offer of twenty-five hundred. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Alright, item number sixty-seven, property address sixty-one seventy-six Laura. Offer PAD LLC. Move that we accept offer of a thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item sixty-eight. Property address forty-two fifty-seven Laberty Avenue. Offer Derek and Tamika Fields. I move to reject offer due to insufficient proof of financial capacity to support project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. The next project that we have, uh, sixty-nine has multiple offers. Um, property address is fourteen sixty-one Laurel Street, uh, two offers. Nicole Jones and Kathy Ralston. Move that we accept offer B, Kathy Ralston. Um, at two thousand eight hundred dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing and reject offer A in favor of offer B. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item seventy, okay. Alright, um. Alright, um item, item seventy. We have fifty forty-five Genevee Avenue. And we have multiple offers here. Uh we have item A uh is offered by Eddie Buckley. And then offer B, uh Deanna Darden, uh move that we accept offer A. And reject offer B in favor of offer A. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item seven, item seventy-one. Property address forty-seven fifteen Newberry Terrace. Offer Kelly Hall. Um and move that we accept offer of three thousand dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role is to vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number seven, uh seventy-two. We have multiple offers on seventy-two, uh offer A. Uh that is Buzzilla Enterprises and. Offer B Shamika Carpenter, uh property address, as we said, is forty-six oh-five. Through oh-seven Pope Avenue move. That each one of those looks like, um okay. Move to reject uh both A and B. Uh due to uh lack of information, uh financial information. To support uh the project. Um do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item seventy-three. Uh property address is thirty-nine forty-five North Twentieth Street. Uh offer is Kelly M. Hall. Um move to reject as uh Ms. Hall was approved for another offer. Um could I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item seventy-four, we have multiple offers uh listed. For seventy-four, um property address is fifty thirty-eight Maple Avenue. Um we have offer A Sheila Vassapo-Moyo. And we have uh Kelly Hall. Uh move that we accept offer A and reject offer B. Um in favor of offer A. Uh may I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is to vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Um offer number seventy-five. Forty-seven thirty-four McMillan Avenue. Offer is B E L M Holdings LLC. Move that we accept offer of a thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is to vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item forty-seven thirty-two McMillan Avenue. Um offer B E L M Holdings. Uh move to accept offer of a thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role is to vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item seventy-seven. Property address fifty-four sixty-two Beacon Avenue. Offer Willow Str- Strategic Solutions LLC. Uh move that we reject offer due to lack of proof of financial resources support project. May I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second. Previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item seventy-eight, forty-two sixty-four Blair. We have two offers, A and B. We have A Justin Ki- Kiminera, Kiminera. And uh Shamika Carpenter, uh we move to reject both offers. A and B due to lack of proof of financial resources support project. Item, I'm sorry.
Second.
Second. Okay, previous role is to vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item fifty fifteen twenty-five Billups Avenue. Uh same offer as before, Justin and Amy. I move that uh we reject offer. Uh number seventy-nine here at fifteen twenty-five due to lack of financial resources support project. Um do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number eighty, property address nineteen eighteen Garden Street. Offer Ronald Jones. Move that we accept offer of one thousand three hundred. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role is to vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item eighty-one, property address fifty-four seventy-six Beacon Avenue. Offer Shamika Carpenter. Move to accept offer of a thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item eighty-two. Um this is under the heading of donations. Donations are parcels which consist of unoccupied ground. Or structures owned by constituents who desire to donate. Due to no longer wanting the property or they are incapable of maintaining the upkeep. The donations entered into the L R A inventory and sold using the L R A process. First property we have under donation is fifty-three sixty-five Ridge. A move that we accept this property as a donated property. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. The second property is forty-two thirty-four Blair. And um offer is Nancy Anderson and Gregory Taborn. A move that we accept forty-two thirty-four Blair as a donation. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Okay, we're under uh the next heading of miscellaneous. Miscellaneous items are requested changes from the original approved board decision. These may include the change of end use, a name change, et cetera. These requests must go before the board for consideration. So the first one um that we have is um correction of a resolution of ownership. Uh the offer is um Helen Jones. Uh at fifty-nine forty-four Highland. Uh a move that we uh accept um this change, this correction. Um may I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Alright, uh item number eighty-five, offer Herman and Pamela Bailey. Um property address fourteen eighteen Montclair. Uh move that we reject offer as the property needs to be demolished. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item eighty-six Orlando Phi- Pippus. Uh property address forty-nine twenty-two Laberty Avenue. Uh move that we accept offer of five hundred dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of financing. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item eighty-seven, um we have Talis Williams. Um we want to, I just need to confer on this one, hold on please. Okay. Okay. Yeah, we're gonna have to set. Okay. Alright, um. Number eighty-seven Talis Williams, property address forty-seven sixty-nine. Um there had been a counter offer made by um the offer. And we are accepting that counter offer at two thousand four hundred dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Um do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role is to vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Um item eighty-eight, um it's like a contemporary construction easement, Great Rivers Greenway District. Uh we move to accept that uh construction easement. Um may I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Um item eighty-nine is a change of end use. There and the offer is Sammy Rollison. Uh property address is forty-five sixty-four Plover Avenue. Um we, I make a motion that we accept the change of use. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is to vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Okay. Item number ninety. Um we have another change of end use in plans. Um a move that we accept uh these items that are listed in exhibit A. Accepting change in end use um with plans, budget and financing. Um may I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role is to vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Okay. Um the, in this particular one on ninety-one. Um the offer has made a counter offer. And I move that we accept the counter offer from Taylor Jones for. A thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of financing for. Forty-two twenty-nine East Page Boulevard and forty-two thirty-three East Page Boulevard. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Uh previous role is a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Okay. So on this one, we have on ninety-two. Uh right. Uh item number ninety-two, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer Vibrant Blue Realty LLC. Care of Vernon C. Gentry. Um move that we counter offer. At twenty thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars as a twelve month option. With closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm so with so. Uh this should be approved with budget and financing. I'd like to make a second.
Second.
Have a second, okay, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of deferred. Um a first item in this category is um Jeffrey Gunn and Timothy Gunn. Um we have. Hold on please. Uh Erica? So yeah, so it says that exhibit A. So they shouldn't put this. They shouldn't put these as exhibit A. Yeah, it should. Okay, we have multiple properties listed as a part of exhibit A. Um and they are um fifty-five forty-four Greer Avenue. Fifty-five sixty-six Greer Avenue, fifty-five seventy Greer Avenue, fifty-five twenty-one Greer Avenue. Fifty-five fifty-two Greer Avenue, fifty-five fifty Greer Avenue and fifty-five forty-six Greer. Uh I move that we counter uh this offer. At four thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars with closing contingent upon approval of financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number, item number ninety-four. Property address fifty-four thirty-eight Oriole Avenue. Offer Robert Deal and Tiffany Hunter. Move that we defer any action on this parcel pending community input prior to the commission making decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number ninety-five. Um there are multiple properties that are listed in exhibit A. A move that we defer uh any action on these parcels are listed. Uh in exhibit A offered by Von J Dent. Um until the commission has had a chance to review community input. Um could we have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Uh with that, that includes our offers, our review of the offers and we can continue on with our agenda. If we could now move on to our director's report.
Yes, uh good morning commissioners and those attending, uh in light of the healthy agenda and the ninety-five. Uh, in light of the healthy agenda and the ninety-five agenda items that we have reviewed. Uh, I will not belabor this meeting uh and will popo- postpone a director's report until the next meeting. Uh, but I do like to extend my thanks to staff. Uh, and also the commissioners for your time in reviewing offers. Uh, as well as the community, the community organizations, uh, those who have contributed and are helping move forward the city of Saint Louis. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, well, the next commission meeting is scheduled for October the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, can we have, uh, I'm, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, aight, alright. Alright, the meeting is adjourned.